Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, January 23rd at 7:00 PM. We have a series of four committee meetings tonight, a busy schedule. And we'll get started right away with Finance and Personnel Committee. We have some information on appropriations and I believe the auditor is here to help us with some discussion tonight, too. Councilmember Reisner is the Chair of Finance and Personnel.
All right, thank you, Madam President. There's only one item under Finance and Personnel Committee tonight, that's appropriations, increase slash decreasing. Who would like to lead off? Who's up? The batters? Auditor?
Okay, so what we are asking for really is just going to be decreasing some appropriations to be more in line with what we think the actual revenue is going to be, partly because of the carryover. You know, when all the budget processing was going on, October, November, December, we didn't know our actual carryover for the year until after we closed out here, you know, in the last couple of weeks. So, three funds that we have in mind right now. One is 293, which is law enforcement trust fund. And that revenue is from forfeitures and things like that. So, last year we got 2,900. Some years we might get, you know, 3,900 or, you know, 20,000. You never know. And so the appropriation in there for 15,000 is a carryover from last year's budget, probably. And that happens when we're trying to put new numbers into a budget. We use the same numbers from last year. But we need to reduce that because we don't know that we'll have that much revenue. And that's a small, you know, a small decrease, but it needs to be done because it's so limited in its revenue. And then in 270, we need to decrease that, you know, by at least 500,000. Probably a little bit more than that, actually, but the fact is, there's 500,000 appropriated in there that was for the pool study last year, which we don't need this year. And that's another thing that was just carried over from one budget to the other. So that's an easy decrease for 270, which is recreation. So we want to get that taken care of as soon as possible because as we know, recreation and community center have sort of tight budgets generally. The third one is the general fund. We need to decrease that by about $600,000. As I said, our carryover was about $600,000 less than we thought in October. It was 2 million the year before. It was only about 1.4 this year. And so that one, I have talked to the mayor and we're going to work on where the decreases will come. In the general fund, you have about 11 different departments that are budgeted in there. It's not quite as easy to just go and say, taking this all out of equipment or supplies. You've got 11 supply lines, 11, you know, of everything. So if that's okay, we'll have those numbers by next Monday because they'll have to come out of the different department funds. Anybody having questions about any of those?
We'll be working on that to find out where this money's going to come from. One area that's already been identified, Workman's Comp, to where we've applied $100,000, give or take, within that account that we can draw down. But we'll be looking, we'll be doing this a lot tomorrow, is probably order of the day.
We'll be able to find it and, you know, Laura, the deputy auditor, and I could go in there and say, eh, let's cut that and that and that. But, you know, the mayor knows more about why things were budgeted the way they were. And so I'm sure we'll be able to do it. And, you know, hopefully we will get more revenue and things will work out as the year goes on. But at this point, as you saw on your unappropriated balance sheet, we have a pretty, pretty low unappropriated balance amount as it stands right now. Now, on the other hand, we also might be decreasing some of the revenue as we decrease these funds, these appropriations, so we're not, we're not going to end up with a $600,000 unappropriated balance in the general fund after we do that because we do need to decrease some of the revenue to go along with that.
Any other comments from the administration? Madam President?
Just a question on the workers' comp. You said that that might be an area, and I know that we switched our system from a paying on time to a pay forward.
Yes.
But we still have some money that, was there a rate decrease or some savings that you're anticipating?
Well, we, yes and no. The mayor and I discussed this today. Last year, we had to make three payments. We were paying for 2015 in the spring of 2016, and then we had to pay for 2016 in September. And then in December, we got billed for 2017. We didn't pay the full amount for 2017. We paid half. And we'll, of course, be paying the other half, you know, before too long. But yes, we did have an increased amount of payments for last year. However, we, we've had some really great refunds and rebates from workers' comp. As you know, I've come and asked you, let's appropriate this and tie it up so it'll be there when we make these payments. And that helped a lot. And although we did decrease the percentage that we were charging each department for their workers' comp, we feel we could reduce that just a little bit more at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Along those same lines, I mean, we're looking in April to be receiving a check from Workman's Comp for the group retro program that we're participating in, which is $135,764. That'll be coming back to the city as a refund.
So those hundred thousands are nice and they do help a lot.
Member Costas?
Thank you. So as you're puzzling through this, will we see this then show up in our email inbox or is it the next time we'll see it come through as an ordinance or?
Oh, I'm happy to send it out. Typically, I send it to the finance chair. But I'm happy to send it to all of council as soon as we get it together so you can look at what we're doing. Basically, you know, Member Reisner is who I work with and meet with about finances, but there's no reason why you can't, why we can't send that out by the end of the week so you'll see it before Monday.
Okay.
So you can give you an idea of where we end up taking the money from and who might be coming back in six months asking for more money because we did that, but we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I may, next Monday, there is no city council, so it's...
Oh, it's two weeks, right.
It's two weeks.
We have two weeks.
Yeah, you've got tons of time.
I think proper process should be that it goes to the Chair of Finance and the Chair distributes it out.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Right, no problem at all.
And really, it was this afternoon when I sent the detail that I just went over with you. We just closed the month out and all of this just came to our attention this past week. So, and it's pretty typical to make a lot of these changes in January because we don't truly know the carryover. People pay a lot of bills at the end of the year. Sometimes they're paying last year's bills in January. And so it's hard to know what our carryover is until January. And so, but there's no reason why we can't get more information on this out before the meeting. So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up and we'll, we'll have the specifics soon.
I understand. I'm still struggling with my budget.
Yeah. Me, too.
Other questions? Anyone else? Administration? Okay, thank you, auditor.
Thank you.
So, two weeks from now, we'll have an ordinance ready, I suppose. Well, in that case, that's all the bullets I have on Finance and Personnel.
Then we'll move on to Transportation Committee with Chair, Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the International Street Fair. I think we'll talk just about that weekend in general. Our Assistant Service Safety Director has been communicating with Ohio University and they've come up with the date of April 15th for the street fair. And it will be placed, the request is to place it the same place it was last year since it worked out so well and there was the cooperation with Ohio University. I will note that that is not the weekend of Number Fest. So apparently Number Fest is the next weekend, the 22nd, I believe. The other thing I wanted to mention in regards to that weekend is Beautification Day is Sunday, April 9th, and it's earlier in the month of April due to finals being towards the end of April. So they wanted to maximize the students' help during that weekend. And I think Ron Lucas has some things to share about beautification. Now it's a week, is kind of the hope.
Well, Selena is here.
Is Selena here?
Yeah, she is.
Selena, would you like to speak at the podium? Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. So just on the beautification day, even though we're talking, it's going to be a combined event, so that's why it didn't get kind of written this way, so...
Yes, the intention is for the week leading up to Athens Beautification Day, so starting, I believe it's Monday, April 3rd, we're going to have community service events throughout the week.
Okay.
In coordination with the city and the university in order to promote more community service from students on campus.
Okay. I appreciate that. So I had it backwards. I thought it was going to be the week after. Okay, it's the week before. All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments you want to make about street fair?
Well, the location really worked out last year. I think that Ohio University really was sold on that and maximizing that space for something that we typically don't use was a good idea.
Okay.
And I believe the closure is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Council, have any questions? Member Costas?
Can you just refresh us about where, what streets are we looking at again this year for, what streets are going to be closed for the street fair?
So it's Court Street, south of Union. So basically between Union and Mulberry.
Okay.
And then the gateway was utilized a lot last year.
Oh, it was, it was close to Washington.
Was it? I'm sorry.
It was close to Washington.
Yeah, it's, it's Washington to President's Street.
To Mulberry.
All the way to Mulberry? Oh, because, because there's no traffic that can come, right. So it's down to Washington.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to Washington. Any, any more questions? And I would just comment that that intersection is then closed at Court and Union because some of the food trucks were at either side on Union.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, thank you. So that, that will come forward at our next meeting. Parking enforcement, contract renewal with Complus Innovations. I think, Ron, I'm going to let you share what you know about that.
Well, we, we've utilized Complus and Police Department for a number of years and just recently, we've integrated Park Mobile into it. And it was a very seamless integration and the staff at Complus was excellent in terms of helping us with that transition and getting it into our handhelds. So my, my opinion is that it would be a good renewal. We have a lot of good tech support from them and it works for our needs.
Is there a cost involved with this?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen the contract.
I don't know that it says, but essentially it runs anywhere $3,000 to $4,000 a month, they can hear me. So you are looking at something that's greater than $50,000 a year. But the technology that's associated with it and the law directors reviewed this, their handhelds, all the technology we use is all provided by Complus under this contract. I'm also asking, and I kind of just threw Ron into this, for an emergency clause because the renewal came up in December and that's when we received it because this is the first opportunity to bring it forward to council.
Any questions from council?
Is the $3.50, $3.50 fee, is that paid by the person who receives the ticket in addition to the ticket if they do these convenience fees?
Similar to...
It doesn't come out of it?
Yeah, if you use your utility billing and hopefully soon if we have credit cards available, the utility billing will be the same. It's paid by the end user.
So for a $10 ticket, somebody's paying the company $3.50 to use that?
If they want to use the online parking ticket.
But it's their option.
Mm-hmm.
Member Costas?
Yes, thank you. So you said the hardware is included in that 3,000 or 4,000? They, they own the hardware and we just have use of it or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And there's a list. You should have a copy of this contract?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there is a list that shows the equipment that's associated and provided.
Here's a, yeah. There's a PC, a printer, a laser printer, barcode reader, you know, five mobile enforcement devices, three fast-track software licenses.
Oh, I see.
Handheld ticket stock. I mean, those are, that's the whole package right there.
At the bottom there.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Parking enforcement, finally, their revenue is up from last year, 100 left, but we can provide you that data.
Okay. That was exactly my question. So it would be good to know those facts, if this is helping us improve the revenues.
And I don't seem to have maybe, I don't, I only have one page from the ordinance from 10 years ago. This is renewed every 10 years?
They are telling me there was a renewal upgrade in 2010, but it didn't come through council that we can locate. I can provide this.
I think that...
Sometimes when we scan, our scanner doesn't always do...
Right, so I would appreciate, so I could send out to the rest of council all the details of the questions we've been asking tonight because I don't have the contract or, well, maybe you don't have it yet either, but...
I do.
We'd like to see that, please.
I do have, I do have one more question.
Sure.
I'm coming up with only $48,000 if it's $4,000 a month.
But if it's a three-year contract, that exceeds it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I got it.
And that's an estimate, they don't know how much revenue. They can't, they've seen a rate surge since the implementation of Park Mobile.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Who's seen a rate surge?
Great surge, we have, in revenue.
In revenue, since Park Mobile?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Member President Isley?
This is my ignorance, that this is, it comes up as parking enforcement, but, so does this govern the meters for the Park Mobile, the electronic system where you can feed the meter that, you know, and add time to your meter, as well as the parking enforcement, parking ticket end of it?
So is your question, is this part of Park Mobile?
Yeah. And is...
It's reverse. Park Mobile...
Park Mobile doesn't have any coin component, is...
No, I know it does.
Is that...
So are we switching over totally to no coins?
We have been utilizing the same company and what Ron was stating at the beginning is they were excellent in incorporating the Park Mobile.
So basically, Complus is our parking enforcement software that was in place before Park Mobile. So that's what we use to enforce the meters in the parking garage and on the street. Park Mobile integrated last year and we basically had Park Mobile and Complus work together to integrate Park, Park Mobile into the Complus software. So now that the park, so now the parking enforcement officers have both options.
Got it, okay.
They can check a meter that uses coins or a smart card or Park Mobile.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification. How's the rest of council? Everything, everybody good? All right. We look forward to the additional information on the contract and, okay, cruise-in street Tradition in Athens to have the cruise-ins during the warmer months. We have three dates for the closure of Washington to State Street on Court, and that is June 2nd, August 11th, and September 22nd. And that's usually a shutdown, start closing the street about...
5:00 PM to 9:00 is typical closure. The event takes place 6:00 PM to 8:00 typically.
Any questions? Member Costas?
And that's between, that's between Court and...
It's on Court Street, it's on Court Street between Washington and State.
Washington and State.
Washington and State, so none of the, the side streets are closed? It's closed, okay.
Traffic flows fairly well.
Yeah, traffic, traffic has options since the cross intersections are open.
Okay.
Member Butler?
Thank you. The feedback I've received from community members and business owners is that when we do close Court Street, they prefer more advanced warning or notice. And that has been challenging with the Union Street down to one lane this past year, that there had been traffic backed up as a consequence when we closed down Court Street. So hopefully that won't be an issue this coming summer, that Union Street will likely be open, I think, to two lanes.
Yeah, that's something that I can do a better job of is when we have our events, start putting out some PSAs with that closure a week in advance or something like that.
I would even do it sooner than that, you know, but at the next, you usually go to the Uptown Business Association meetings.
Well, yeah, they do, they are notified of closures. We start talking about closures to Uptown Business Association well in its months.
Right.
But not everybody's a member of Uptown Business Association, so giving them their information in alternative ways is better.
So last week, we began the legislation for the improvements on Union Street. When do we anticipate that might be completed? Will they be working all summer?
We're trying to pin this in between May and August.
Okay.
When our populace is the lowest.
So Union Street will still have some stuff going on during the summer.
It will, but it won't be the same impact that we're seeing because of the fire affected area with, especially with the fence. We're not, there's, there won't be that level of work going on to where it's going to be squeezing lane down, lanes down again. Likely some parking, but...
Well, and we are getting this legislation out fairly early this year, so all of the summer legislation is coming through fairly early.
You know, one of the other things we can do in terms of getting out, unless this is being done already, to the Uptown businesses, I think what Ron pointed out is something that's really worth considering, and that is, not everyone belongs to a UBA, to the Uptown Business Association, nor does everyone belong to the Chamber of Commerce, but there is some separation where you may have some businesses that belong to one but don't belong to the other or attend. And so we can probably push some things through, ask Michelle O'Stryke if she would reach further out to all of the members so that, so that everyone knows what's going on in the Uptown area when it comes to these events.
Comments? All right, that would be the Transportation Committee. Thank you.
We'll move on now to Planning and Economic Development Committee with Councilmember Paul serving as chair.
Thank you. Tonight, we just had one agenda item, an increase in contract amounts for the Economic Development Council and Mayor Wild, or, oh, my bad. I haven't done that yet, so it was a long, it was a long weekend. Sorry, Mayor Patterson is here to, to present his information.
Sure.
Hit the reset.
As council knows, you know, I, I sit on the EDC as a board member and this is something that was communicated to all board members. There's representation from the county as well as Ohio University. And since its inception, the EDC, the city and Ohio University as well as Athens County has been paying $55,000 a year for the economic development planning that goes on through that office. And then at the tail end of last year, 2016, the director, Sarah Mars, was asking that it be increased to $60,000, increased by $5,000 a year, to go up to $60,000 a year. Something that I want to point out, too, that came up through the EDC, I don't know that you have this, I think that Clerk of Council sent this out to everyone, the document that came from Sarah Mars, the director. And that is that for the first time ever, to where it becomes not only public, but it's a private partnership with the EDC, is looking to have private partners. If you look halfway down that table, you'll see that for, trying to get private partners in this, and this could be anybody from Ohio Health to who knows who, it's $75,000 a year for them so that the EDC can enhance its span. Some of the things that are notable, and I know council's aware of this, but it's worth reminding everyone that the, the whole Athens Mold Machine Project, as well as the Stimson Avenue Roundabout and McKinley Avenue Extension, a lot of that work was done by the EDC. The EDC pushing that through and being the single point in terms of liaison to coordinate everything from ARC dollars to Jobs Ohio dollars to ODOT dollars to city engagement to Ohio University engagement. So, you know, the EDC is critical and I think has put forward, just had a meeting earlier today, the strategic planning for the EDC and the path they're going, going to take moving forward. And I think it's a pretty progressive, at some point, like, as soon as I get the document in its, its final draft form, I certainly want council to have it so where you can see what the goals are moving forward. It's kind of a five-year plan moving out in terms of what the EDC, what they plan to provide for the city of Athens as well as the county.
And so some, and we're still doing a year-by-year contract with them.
We are.
Which is similar to the Athens Visitor Bureau contract. That's a one-year contract. Can you explain the private partners? I'm a little, it's, part of me says that sends up a signal, like, are these, are these people going to get priority, I don't know, priority in line for funding or how are the private partners going to function?
Well, we just learned this through, the group that has kind of spearheaded the strategic planning is the Montrose Group. They do this a lot in terms of strategic planning for various cities. And one of the things they brought to our attention is that the Athens County Economic Development Council is one of the few that don't have a public-private partnership to where they have private entities who are essentially contributing to economic development. And so therefore, they felt that it was prudent. I think it is wise, too. It's, everyone still has the same level of voice in terms of the planning that we do within our, the city, within the county.
But what are they getting out of it? That's what people are going to ask, what are the private, the private industries getting out from the EDC?
You know, it could be anything from helping site plan for small, small spinoff businesses that might assist a particular business or all the businesses as we move forward. I mean, it could help, I think, larger, you know, businesses who want to be involved in the EDC in a number of different ways.
You're not convincing me. That's okay. I mean, I, part of it is the strategic plan should discuss it more, right? I'm assuming that they're going to discuss a role of private partnerships and such.
Oh, sure.
You know, I, I guess the thing, my bells are going off because in the past, some things like when Jobs Ohio went and they started doing this more quasi-private funding of economic development, a lot of people were concerned that there wasn't a lot of public transparency on what's going on with the money that's co-mingled with public money because they were saying, you know, there's, there's, you know, business priority or business, you know, they can't be as transparent because there might be trademark secrets or, or this sort of thing. sort of thing. And so I think that we need to have it really planned out and upfront with the transparency if there's going to be public money co-mingled with private money.
Sure. But it, but this is through the EDC, and that is all transparent. So whoever decides they want to, to pay to be part of the Athens County Economic Development, I mean, that's all transparent.
Right.
So there is no hiding, and it's for operations within the EDC.
Right. But in the past, when I've asked questions of the EDC about what's going on, one of the answers I have gotten is that we can't talk about it because there's, you know, we want to keep the, the clients private, there's, you know, a lot of competition between different companies. And so there is an element that, in the past, that has not been very transparent. So I want to make sure that going forward, that there is transparency and sunshine, especially if there's co-mingling of this money. So, so, just, any questions?
Can I, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Butler?
Okay. Thank you. So if I understand this correctly, we would be seeing or witnessing $5,000 from the city, the...
County.
The county and the university, correct? So that's an extra $15,000 that that department would be seeing, the EDC. Some curious, would, would that then be, there be an impact then on their revenue? I mean, I'm sorry, on their salaries? Is that, and what would that be?
Well, we are looking at their salaries right now. I thought that was private. So I, I'm, we are looking at their salaries right now.
Their salaries are private?
Yeah. Is that, or is it a, that is that public record?
It's a public record.
As, yeah, Member Fall was just saying, I mean, it's, right now, it's, it's government funding that's going into this. And in particular, it's worth noting or mentioning this, is that this money is coming from the transient guest tax is, which is what money funds, at least our share for the EDC is coming from that fund.
Right. But that's also funding that goes to the Athens Visitor, ACCVB.
It is.
If so.
It is.
It's just, I know that, that there has been a lot of discussion about when you co-mingle and that transparency because I've had questions about transparency with, I think that the Visitor Bureau has a lot more transparency with what they're doing than sometimes the Economic Development Council. And they, you know, they, I just want to make sure that those safeguards are in, in place. So, questions?
President? Not critical to tonight's discussion, but you, the, Sarah did provide the assets and liabilities statement from the CPA. And I noticed that there is $37,000 in the revolving loan fund. So you have a cash balance of $37,000.
For the EDC?
For the revolving loan fund.
Oh.
And you also have then the Economic Development Council charging $5,000 for administration of the revolving loan fund, if I'm understanding the lines right. Because on their budget for the year, they, they say they have revolving loan fund administration money coming in. I was just wondering on the status of that loan fund and what our goals are for the activity on that. I know we, we've probably, obviously turned over the administration of that to them. And what, is it active and...
Yeah, I can follow up and get you information on that.
Okay.
Yeah, the city, that was when I was on council, when that ship went to the EDC that can...
And I know that's certainly a tool for us and something, and so if we're, if we're charging, if we're, that may not come out of the balance of the revolving loan fund, but if it's a $5,000 admin fee on that, then...
I could be wrong, but I think part of that, they also created these micro-loans program under their revolving loan, but, don't hold me to that. I'll check to find out what, you know, so I'm accurate in telling you the way that's being used.
And the history of the revolving loan fund is such that since we couldn't get any takers to it, that we've, they've taken it. And when we apply for our chip activities through HAPCAP and through the Office of Community Development, if you have a balance in there, they've been shipping away at that because that's what they say is, so it still goes to good use. It's just that may also be how it's been drawn down. And HAPCAP also charges an admin fee for their oversight.
I know they do.
So I'm basically reviewing the budget for the first time, and this is a pretty healthy budget for, how many staff? Maybe you guys can tell me real fast.
Four.
Four staff. And basically, we're looking at tonight, where's, there's the suggestion that 15, in the end, would it be 15?
Three.
From our local entities? And then the Port Authority, so that would be 20 additional thousand. And then private partners, possibly, I mean, that's not there now, but private partners, they're looking for 75,000. So we have the Port Authority with 5,000, we have the University with 5,000, we have City of Athens with additional 5,000, and Athens County with additional 5,000. So that's 20,000 additional dollars into fairly healthy budget. And I'm, I'm not exactly clear what the new initiatives are, or, I mean, I don't have an understanding of what that is. One of them looks like they, they have some strategy execution for $30,000 as a new line item, and a project specialist for $30,000. So they're planning on expanding their staff? Is that what we're, is that...
That's part of it. I mean, their workload has increased, and it's going to increase exponentially if, if, you know, if we start using some of the tools in our toolbox for things like downtown redevelopment districts, they're going to be heavily involved in that in trying to see, you know, who can they bring in in these new improved spaces to bring jobs and, and business. So the, the idea even was posed to the EDC, the Board, in terms of land banking, you know, does, and who becomes the point person if you start going down the route of, of land banking? And there's a lot of things they're going through, and there's a lot of possibilities. So their workload's likely to go up.
Right. And this is expected to become a, a permanent increase? Or is it a one-time increase?
No, this is a permanent increase. Again, the first time since 2009.
And both, the other entities, the Ohio University and the County of Athens, have already agreed to that. We would like to have an equal voice in this.
And I think some of the budget that Mr. Eisner has just pointed out is that there's an increase in the director's salary with this also.
Yeah, I was curious.
Going from 62,000 to 78,000.
Yeah, I was curious if we were reading that correctly.
We do not have whatever document you're looking, is it loaded?
It's the, it's on the drive. We have it on the drive. Right.
But they don't have access to that? The mayor doesn't have access?
No, they should. It's under 20, 12317 at the top.
President Nisley has a question.
I have a question, too, and we may be able to get the answers, but when I look at the income projections, there's a math error on that one. Because year seven, which is 2016, and my addition on that, it's you've got $55,000 a year from OU, Athens County and City, then 15 from Port Authority, and 67 from the drawdown, that adds up to $247,000. So, and it may just be there's a number missing. So, because that's why I was looking, because I was looking, is there's all that more, there's a lot more income indicated in the budget for 2017, but the number, the grand total number is only $10,000 difference between 16 and 17. So somewhere, so, a little bit of, maybe a corrected copy to us.
Member Cosse?
Yes, thank you. I was curious to kind of know what the, how the structure is. Is, this is, this is an appointed position? Is it by, by, by the county commissioners? Or, I mean, how does this work?
You mean the new specialist?
No, I mean, no, just, just the whole...
Oh, the EDC?
Yes.
The EDC is like a quasi-governmental...
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
And I, each entity has a board member representative. And they are in charge of, of like hiring, you know, the members that would be on as director, executive director and such. And it probably has some weird Ohio Revised Code language that also produces, you know, the bare board, you know, it's a weird quasi-governmental sort of thing, so...
There's, there's five board members. There's, Lenny Liasson serves for the county, I serve for the city, Steve Golding serves for the university, Jack Bordel serves as a business leader.
He's also with the Port Authority.
And he's with the Port Authority, yeah, that's correct. And then Jennifer Simon from the Innovation Center.
Right. I think, so I would just say, when you look at what the proposed budget is for 10 of 17 through 12 of 17, looking at the salaries and the increases, which are quite substantial...
January 1.
January 1. I'm sorry, I misread that. Especially as a board member, I, I would hope that you would review that because they are substantial increases compared to last year's budget.
If we're reading this correctly.
If we're reading it correctly. I think, I think what I'm getting is that the numbers do, need to be flushed out more. I would like the Board to present a report or something to us regarding this. And Sarah did present a presentation, you know, a month or two, probably right before Christmas. But I think that what I get from the EDC is, I'm not 100% sure exactly how the transparency works, why there's certain types of increases, if she's getting, you know, if there's an increase of that much money in salary. I also look at how much work the Visitor Bureau does, and how much money they bring in, and how much new businesses they've been bringing in, and whether there's an equity issue between the EDC and our Athens, you know, Visitor Bureau, which are getting money out of the same pot, and whether there's equity between, you know, the, the directors getting, sort, and I, you know, I think that that's an important thing because they are two legs of a very important stool. They need to work together, and I want to make sure that there, you know, there's some equity, especially since, in my mind, the Visitor Bureau is bringing in a lot of that transient guest tax with the increases in, in the hotels and the work that they've been doing with marketing and bringing in new entities of that. And so I, I guess what I'd like to do is see much more flushed-out information. And I kind of get that information, I got, I get that from the rest of council.
Okay. That's fine. We can, we can get all the information that you want, but when you're comparing the EDC to tourism and the Visitors Bureau, you know, we're talking apples and oranges because we're talking about a population that will come here to visit, that come here for whatever reason versus job creation, so...
But that, that's not, that's not, you see, that, I think that's one problem that has been going on, is that EDC has one type of job creation. You look at when the Director of the Visitor Bureau came and showed us the increase in jobs with hotel increases, with, you know, the fact that our economy is heavily tourism-oriented. And that, I get the idea of that there's, that there needs to be communication between them, and the Visitor Bureau is a really, and people call them a marketing, but they are out there doing huge amount of work to bring in new businesses to make sure that the economic development of tourism in this area is done right and is done, you know, is known all over the state. And that is, when you look at our budgets, you look at where all the money's coming in from new businesses and stuff, tourism is a huge economic driver.
I'm not going to contest tourism. I'm not, that's not what I'm saying.
Right, but you just said, you know, you're talking about somebody coming in and staying.
What their focus is, their, what their missions are, are very different.
Right. But in certain...
But they're both ambassadors for the city.
Right. And in certain ways, they're not very different.
And for the county.
Because, and so what I'm saying is that we need to make sure that the transient guest tax is, we're getting the most bang for our buck on it, so...
And Councilmember Fall, I'm going to, I'm going to say, just this, from my perspective of what we're looking at tonight for agenda items, all very valid points. What we're looking at right now is a $5,000 increase on the, on the Economic Development Council money. And that, so we need to resolve budget issues and a few questions that were highlighted tonight.
Salary increases.
And salary raises.
17,800.
And Chris, I think your point, Councilmember Fall, I think your point is well-taken. And I think long-term, that's a discussion that we probably are not going to resolve next week when we come back with this information. We're looking at our transient guest ta, tax, and that's a big, that's a bigger policy issue that I think we need to talk with some priorities about and with definite, you know, with input from city council members who serve on the Planning and Development Committee. So I'd say it's part of a, you know, maybe a working session later on in the year, but, but not, not right now.
I think we need more flushed-out numbers and such. Also, whether this is retroactive or it's going to be with the 2017, you know, we have signed the 2017...
Well, retroactive would be this year.
This year. I think it's on.
Okay.
Just one more comment. I could not support the ordinance if it's written for the additional 5,000 at this moment with the numbers and facts that we have. So I'll just throw that out there.
I think people are uncomfortable not knowing what the budget that we've been handed, you know, increases in salary and, and such, so, okay. Sorry. Rather, so, okay. Thank you. That's all for this committee.
Thank you. We'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have two items on the agenda this evening, first being the Athens Beautification Day and the second being the Municipal Pool. The Athens Beautification, Beautification Day, we will be witness to a presentation by Ms. Selena Snyder, who is here this evening. So let's offer her our time and attention. Thank you.
Selena Snyder, I'm the Director of Athens Beautification Day this year. Athens Beautification Day will be on Sunday, April 9th, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. It will take place on College Green, and from there, participants will depart to their project sites. So this is just to show how Athens Beautification Day has grown over the past 13 years. It started in 2005 by OU's men's water polo team with just about 150 participants. And last year, we were almost to 1,000 participants. So this year, we're hoping to break 1,000. And in terms of projects, in 2005, they had 15 projects, and this year, we're on our way to getting 70 projects. So hopefully, we'll meet that goal and have the most projects to date. So continuing down memory lane, this is the logo that we used in 2014, 2015's logo, 2016's logo, and this will be this year's logo, which we just selected today. It was designed by Amy Grubie, and this will be on all the T-shirts this year. So we're very excited about that. When and where? Again, I said it will start on College Green and then depart to the project sites on April 9th. The schedule will be the same as last year, following two shifts, morning shift and an afternoon shift for projects. Participants can choose to participate in either one shift or both shifts, depending on how much service they want to do that day. Projects and locations, in the past, we've had projects at Wayne National Forest, Dairy Barn, Habitat House, we've done trash cleanups both on OU campus and around the city. This year, we are expanding our projects to include Amesville and Nelsonville. So Athens Beautification Day is going from just the City of Athens to Athens County. So we're very excited about that. How to register? Today, the event on Facebook went live with open registration for community members. And by the end of the week, we should have registration for OU students up on OrgSync. So please register, and then we can place everyone with their projects. How everyone can help? You can register to participate, more participants, the better. Additionally, we seek funding for the event. It does cost around $10,000 to pull off Athens Beautification Day. So we seek funding through grants, student organizations, and the City of Athens. through grants, student organizations, the city of Athens and local businesses. Those are just the sponsorship levels to look at and each of them have their own corresponding rewards. So looking at our budget, this year we will be having food from Kaiser's again and I believe that should be the same quote as last year, so 3,500. And then, of course, additional costs that we normally have, t-shirts and transportation and supplies depends on the projects. So I'm here tonight presenting to ask the city council if they would monetarily support Athens Beautification Day again this year like they have in the past. We would greatly appreciate it. Yeah, so again, I'm Selena Snyder. If you have any questions, you can contact me at ouabday@gmail.com, find us on Facebook or Twitter. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Can you kindly remind us here in, in TV world, what the amount was that you're asking for and the amount that was asked for in the past?
In the past, we've asked for $1,000 from the city. We are asking for that again this year.
Okay, 1,000?
1,000.
Okay, thank you. Number.
Can individuals sponsor, contribute?
Yes, yes.
And how do they go about doing that as an individual?
Email me and I will send the forms. What we can work out is possibly putting the family's last name on the t-shirt or something similar. Normally our sponsors have their logos on the back of the t-shirts.
Oh, I need us a logo then. Thank you. Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you. Selena, can you let folks know if they're part of an organization that might have a project that they'd like to request volunteers for, how they can go about registering as a potential project for the day?
Certainly. If organizations are interested in hosting a project and leading it, feel free to contact me via email and I will, again, send you the forms and we will work out how many volunteers you need, what time works best for you and how we can help out with transportation.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from other councilmembers or comments? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
I have two questions. One, this doesn't include any kind of private property beautification, does it? I mean, if I want my front yard to have some flowers planted in it, is there any way that can be done?
Sure.
For people? And then the second question would be, how many people actually participate in, in the beautification?
Last year, we had just over 900 participants. Yes, yes, it was very good. And we're hoping this year to break 1,000, that has been our goal for the past three years and we're getting closer every year.
And, and that question about the private?
Yes, yeah, I don't see why not.
So citizens can actually take advantage of this wonderful opportunity and contact you and say, I mean, I really would like to do something, but I'm an older person and I don't have, you know, who strives to push the wheel.
Clean my gutters. Absolutely, yes.
See all that ability issue? Although my understanding is historically that hasn't been the case and there might be.
I understand that historically.
Sure, well, there might be a conflict of interest as well too, something that we might need to look into.
Liability.
I think that the past, if, like, they had identified maybe lower income senior projects that went through probably the Metro and Housing Authority or something, I know that, that they would go and help, like, older seniors and disabled people to help do some things, but not just like somebody like me and says, I would like you to come and clean my gutters, please, so.
President Isley.
So Selena has been, this is your second year, I believe, that you've been directing this and she's just done a marvelous job. She's also had a group of planners that have helped, including Jennifer, Councilmember Cochran, Deputy Service Safety Director Ron Lucas, also Mike Cooper from the County Health Department, Gary Chansey from Wayne National Forest, and maybe that planning group and Barb Harrison from Community Services on campus. And so maybe that planning group would want to take a look at that policy, you know, change before a final answer on private. Might be helpful and also check with the university. But there are a lot of new projects this year and that's exciting to see it go out beyond the city. I think you've been very interested in university students getting to learn more of a sense of the community and so this is an excellent opportunity. We're working for a potential site in Albany this year also. And then I believe this year is the first year that you'll be working with Community Food Initiatives, that's one new project site, as well as the Athens, the History Connection, the New Historical Society. So there's been a lot of expansion and, and good planning, so I want to commend you on the planning on that and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have a couple of comments.
Deputy, Deputy Director.
Yeah, one thing that we will be doing, and this is in conjunction with the whole project, the whole day, is we'll need to remove parking from Court Streets, South Court Street from Union to Mulberry and also from Union Street from, on the south side, from Court to College. And that's just because of all the shuttles that'll be in there to get people from site to site, so just wanted to give you an FYI on that. Also, Selena, we have a lot of supplies, no one stops, so you and I can get together and figure out what we need for all the sites. We should have enough. And I think our next planning meeting is on February 2nd.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll add this as well too, that I am appreciative of the executive branch's involvement in this over the years too, whether it's the Director of Arts, Parks and Recreation, the City Service Safety Director's office, there's been a lot of involvement and planning from your side of the government to help make this possible. And I know many of us on council in the past, as well as our current mayor, have also volunteered and been active with feet on the street that day. I know President Isley and I picked up some trash. I think the mayor might have been with us then too on South Side Park, but I applaud what you're doing and thank you for your time and energy on this. Mayor.
Yeah, I want to echo that. This is, to me, Athens Beautification is one of these perfect town gown, community building events that has taken place for a long time. I should also point out that it was the 2014 Athens Beautification that informed us on the amount, the amount of cigarette butt litter we had up and down Richland Avenue and the uptown area, which informed then our first survey when we launched the cigarette butt bins up and down Court Street and found a rather large, significantly large reduction in cigarette butt litter. But again, it's Athens Beautification that is a plus, you know, it just, you do such a great job making the city look great. It's like our spring cleaning. So thank you.
If there's no further questions? Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Our last item for the evening on the agenda is a presentation regarding the Municipal Pool. This is from MSA Sports. This evening we have Mr. Keith Hall, who is the Principal Architect, and Katie Freeland, who is the Project Manager and Architect as well. They're here presenting on the administration's request. We have a number of community members present this evening as well. My understanding is that councilmembers should have in their email a couple links that were provided to us this evening by the City Service Safety Director, Paula Hiran-Mosley, and that will address some of, I believe, the presentation we'll see this evening, but some of the, for those of you in TV land, it'll, it'll address program elements and amenities, the geotech reports, site planning, discussion of saltwater versus chlorination, cost estimates, as well as some of the design elements, which look at the essence of Athens. So we should be seeing some of that this evening in the presentation. Likewise, we do have other city officials here and Andrew Cheeky, the Assistant Director of Arts, Parks and Recreation is here this evening. We also have a Rec Advisor member in the audience, Mr. Kroll. So thank you for your time and presentation.
Thank you. So thanks for having us here tonight. This is our second presentation to you folks. Since we met with you last time and came here to do the presentation, we've been doing a lot of groundwork, specifically on the site and then working with the Parks and Rec Department on kind of finalizing a lot of the details and everything associated with the pool and what we want to include within it. So with that, we, the area that we focused in on is the, for the site is where the existing pool is. We are going to, you know, that, that red dash line is a little exaggerated, but our site is going to be restricted to the area between the, the main road at the top, the road on the side. We're not going to cross the bike path at the bottom and then we'll leave the bike path at the, at the right in its, in its current location. I just throw this up there, I brought this in last time. This slide was given to us by Paula and her group to remind everybody that we are building in an area that is subject to flooding, so we're having to deal with that. In terms of the process, we, we've gone through the community engagement process, which we did last summer, which informed us of a lot of information that we've incorporated into the plan. Currently, we are, we are at schematic design, we are almost done with it. This is the, you know, one step before we go on to the next and then we'll, we'll finish that up and then drive into design development, then go into construction documents and then obviously managing the construction site. This is our schedule, you know, tonight's, January 23rd, we anticipate that once we leave here tonight, we'll go back and we'll polish some things up. We're going to show you a lot of plans and talk about a lot of amenities. Once we leave here, we're going to go extract this building up from the plan and start looking at what everything's going to really start to look like aesthetically. I'm not going to go through each one of these details, but I, because I'm going to go through the critical stuff. The, we're anticipating that we will bid, advertise for bidding sometime around the mid, end, the latest of May. Bids will be due about three to four weeks after that to allow us to make a contractor selection by the end of June. And then we've got a full month allocated to negotiate contracts and to mobilize that general contractor. And then we'll have about another month or so, give or take, three or four weeks before the pool actually closes down and they start construction. So that will give us about between, by the time we get the bids to the time they start construction, about eight weeks to get things lined up, to get them on site as soon as the pool shuts down and get the project moving. That's critical primarily because it allows us to do some pre-planning. You know, everybody thinks September to May is a long period of time, keep in mind that's winter time and we keep having these mild winters, so we're probably going to get hit pretty hard next year, so we're going to have to deal with that. So as we've gone through the community engagement, talking with you folks, talking with the folks that's going to be operating the pool, this is the, this is essentially the program, a list of the elements that we're going to include in the design. Very early on, a, a zero-entry pool was identified and we have that. A spray ground, a top pool, a separate top pool, then a separate lap pool, deep water diving pool that had eight lanes and a 12-foot dive well. Also, we're going to have two run-out slides. Run-out slides are those that don't plunge into the pool like you have now, it's essentially slide down and, and run out. We're going to incorporate in all this some, of some other amenities such as the climbing wall. You already currently have one of those, we're going to improve on that a little bit. Probably geysers, geysers are those things at the zero-entry that shoot water up, up and down, and then some shake structures. Something that's really has developed over the last couple of months is the program requirements that we're going to have in the poolhouse and the pool equipment building. Restrooms are a, obviously a big piece of this. We've got a party community room that's, that was identified to be associated with the spray ground, obviously the check-in office, admin office, lockers and storage. And then there's a second building that we call the pool equipment building as we get to the site that's not connected up front because we want it to be a little closer to the pool and have separate access to keep chemicals and such away from there. And that, down there, we're going to put the concessions, some unisex restrooms, we've moved the lifeguard office down there as well as some storage. One of the, one of the probably, I want to say probably the most questionable things that we had coming into this project and especially going to this site was what are the subsurface conditions? So we hired a geotech engineer and they went out and they did some borings on the site and we learned a lot about the soil conditions under the site. Some things we found out is that we have what they call undocumented fill. Undocumented fill is just that. It's a geotech goes out, does the boring, looks at what's there, can't, they can't tell what it is, so they're not going to tell us that we can bear on it or not. Usually they recommend that you just take it out and put engineered fill back in, in this case, that's what they've done. We found a large portion of undocumented fill up where we were planning to put the, the, the main poolhouse. In addition to that, where the deep well was, they did some borings and they also found out the bearing capacity in that area was down to 1,000 square feet and we need 1,500 square feet. So we're going to have to increase the foundation system of that deep well, probably with piles, to take into account that lack of bearing pressure that we need there. Neither one of these issues are huge and quite frankly, there's, there was enough, and you'll see this later on in the presentation, enough movement in the budget from one thing to the next. Originally I had the poolhouse on piles. Poolhouse no longer needs to be on piles, we're simply going to extract dirt out of there where the undocumented fill was and put engineered fill back in, and so then the pile cost got shifted to the pools. So from a monetary standpoint, we, we've pretty much remained flat. So this is the updated plan and I'm gonna, I'll get to a, a more zoomed in of the, of the pool area itself, but, you know, the parking is essentially going to remain where it is. We've added about, give or take about 25 to 30 spaces. There is, it's now connected to the, the drive that's on the left, so you can cut through this parking lot and get through one or the other. But as you can see, we want, there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic coming through this parking lot, so we're trying to give specific attention so people aren't just flying through there. So as you can see, the, the drives don't line up. You're, you're really going to have to zigzag through there to get through, but the access is there. And that, that was a conscious effort just to simply slow down traffic through there and make sure everybody sees kids and families and whatevers are cutting through. And we think we've got that properly addressed. And then zooming in on the pool, the, at the top, at the top here, you have the, the poolhouse and I'll get into some specific details of that. That's the first engagement that the, the community will have. They'll go through that, that main area that's kind of hatched in there, that is an open breezeway, so they'll go through there, they'll check in, come into the pool and be, and walk in, you know, onto the zero-entry pool, that's right there in front. To the right of the plan, as you're looking at it, that kidney-shaped piece, that is a, that's the spray ground that we're proposing. And then to the left, the oval shape, is the, is the top pool. And then as you go down, you'll see the lap pool and the dive well, and then in the middle, there's a middle lac, cross axis there, where we have, off to the right would be the two run-out slides and then the other building, the pool mechanical building where the, and the concessions and everything are. We, between the two buildings, the, the activities going on at the top of the plan in that building are mainly check-in and primarily restrooms and locker rooms. So that's why some of the, we were able to, we got a nice middle area here, we brought the concessions down, just to sort of spread out the activity across the pool. And as you can see, all the green, we're trying to incorporate as much green space as we possibly can, that, and that still allows for a lot of deck space around it, so, you know, you can sit chairs on it and whatever at that point. Yeah, and that's a good point. The splash pad is, is located at the top right-hand corner so that, say, when the pool shuts down at the end of August, it'll have a gate around it that will allow that to be open maybe for a few more weeks after the pool season.
And that's the kidney-shaped?
And that's the kidney-shaped piece, yes. And that's important because they don't have to put a lifeguard or an attendant on it, that's why we can do that.
And just a quick interjection, you said tot, T-O-T, or short for toddler, correct?
Yes.
That's the smaller pool on the, on the left.
Yes, it is.
Toddler, thank you.
Toddler, tot, baby pool. The term that we use is tot pool.
Peter.
I lost my presentation. So as we get into the buildings, that middle area that's blank in between, that's a wide-open space. From a design perspective, we really see that as an opportunity to, to embrace this, you know, essence of Athens. And I'm going to get into that a little bit, so kind of keep that in the back of your minds. But you'll come in from the parking lot, immediately up front with, with good sightlines to the parking lot and good sightlines to folks checking in. And we got some logistics to work out with operations on how they're actually going to check in and everything, but you'll check in at that first window up there at the front. And then the second one down from there is an office. If you just sort of continue going right, those purple spaces are all basically support spaces. It's a mechanical room, storage and a janitor's closet. And then if you go further to the right, that's the community room. And that's, that's really worked out nicely for us with the splash pad because we're proposing large door openings on that, so it becomes an opportunity to have, like garage doors. So it becomes an opportunity to have a, it's almost like a shelter-like feel. You can have, you have a birthday party in there and they can have access to, direct access to the splash pad as well as to the pool. We think that's going to be a really cool amenity for, you know, for the, for the community. We think that's going to be a really cool amenity for the community. And then if you go to the left, the blue space is all locker room, restrooms. Well, I'm going to take that back, we don't have locker rooms, the lockers are actually outside. You don't really want to put those inside, they bring them outside so they can be seen and whatever. And then we have two, what I'll call unisex toilets, that can be used for families or whatever, and then, and they can also be used as changing rooms. So, and then when you go in, we have a shower, as you can see in the upper corner, and then a couple of changing rooms in there. And then this is the pool equipment building. This is, until we really get into that purple area and design how the pool equipment's going to lay out, that's going to morph as we get into it, but we don't, it's not going to take up any more space than that, but we, that's going to primarily be dictated by how the tanks lay out and all the equipment and so forth. The green space at the top is the concession, and then the purple space directly behind it is the storage for the concession, and then those two blue spaces at the top are again, two more unisex toilets. So, if I'm down, if you remember the plan, had the lap pool and all that down here in the lower half of the plan, those folks aren't having to run all the way up to the poolhouse to use restrooms. They have direct access here, right next to the concession, so if mom takes the kids down there, everything is there for them that should accommodate them. And one of the things that's really not incorporated on the plan right now is we're going to probably extend a hard cap shade structure, if you want to say that, like a porch, out from the concession, so there's a covered area to put tables and that sort of thing underneath of it.
Can you show us on the main map layout where that room is? We're building two rooms.
Yes, I can. I don't know, can you see my pointer here?
Yep, we can see the pointer.
It's right here.
So, it's on the left side.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sense? Okay. And then the brown space, or orange, brown or orange, is the, that's where the lifeguards will primarily hang out and that sort of thing, and then the purple space right below it, which is storied. One of the things operationally that they've brought up is that, you know, it's with the lap lanes, I guess it's quite a challenge for them to take the lane markers in and out. They don't have the big reels. So, as part of this project, there'll be reels so they can quickly get out and create more lap lines or lanes or take lap lanes down. So, that's going to become a more efficient process for them, and that'll be stored, those will be stored in this room right, I mean literally, you're basically 20 feet away from the lap pool. So, that's going, I think, going to help with some efficiencies at the site too. The cost estimate, I'm not really going to run through this line item by line item necessarily other than to say that we're still, overall, project cost, you can see that, I got below the line and above the line, but so project cost, we're still hovering at about that $7 million and within this, we're carrying about $1.5 million worth of contingency too. And that's a good place to be right now. We still have a few unknowns we've got to work our way through as engineering and design develops. So, I'm feeling pretty, we're doing a pool in Grandview Heights right now, which this is pretty much falling in line with what they've done up there with where their pricing's coming in, and they're doing some things up there that are, you know, what I would say higher-end, but they don't have issues with, you know, subsurface conditions either that we have to account for in ours, so I think it's sort of a little bit of a balance. The last time I was here, and even during the community meetings, there was quite a discussion on saltwater versus chlorine pools.
Correct.
So, we went back and we asked our pool designers, water technology, you know, what's the advantages and disadvantages versus one versus the other? So, with salt, just so everybody understands how this works, you know, there's, salt is put into the system and then a slight electric current is put into the pool to create a chemical reaction that produces a level of chlorine for the pool. So, essentially, they're both chlorine systems. The difference is that you don't have the storage and odors and everything that comes with a chlorine system versus a saltwater pool. But there's some disadvantages that come with that. With that electrical current and the fact that we will probably be doing a stainless steel pool, we have a lot of stainless steel components, if those items aren't welded and sealed near perfect during construction, that can start to create a quickening of corrosiveness on those elements. So, we need, there's a, you know, there's a risk with it from that perspective. No doubt about it, you know, the salt pools, you know, that makes our skin feel better when we get out of the water and all that stuff, there's no hazardous chemicals necessarily involved with it. It's a minimal amount of salt that you need to do, so the long-term cost is, as you're maintaining and everything, your payback is pretty, you know, I would say fairly quick. The neutral pH is less than what you get out of, you know, out of a chlorine sanitation system. I kind of mentioned some of the liabilities associated with it. It increases water conductivity and complicates the bonding of the ground process, that gets back to the corrosiveness on the stainless elements. There is an added construction expense that comes along with it, that's usually around 20, I mean, we got listed there about $10,000 to $20,000 more per pool, but you can get in to 20 to 25, I mean, it can be a pretty hefty number once you get into it. And then, part of the issue is, is that a lot of times you want to build in the ability to go back to a traditional system, so you've got that cost that comes along, comes back to it too, because there's, there can be failures in the salt system too. And then this is just the traditional system, traditional chlorines. The benefits are that more people, there's more people available to come maintain them and, you know, follow up on them and so forth. They're designed to meet the chlorine demand with a lower initial cost in the equipment, so there's less money that goes into them, decreased, you know, the whole voltage issue that's out there, and then there's reduced maintenance for the deck and the splash area. I failed to mention on the salt, that the splashing of the salt can sometimes stain the deck surface around the edges. The liabilities is the UV support system and the chlorine reduction. Greater, you have the pH balance on the greater use of the chemicals is something you need to take into consideration. And then the hazardous materials, you know, the smells and the burns and everything that could potentially come along with it, and there's the corrosion, I'm sure everybody's seen it, when you go into the pool equipment room, this chlorine has the ability to just corrode everything if you don't contain it right. So, it's not a, it's not an issue of saltwater versus chlorine necessarily, it's here's what chlorine does and here's what salt does. What liabilities do, what liabilities do we take on? And then the salt, obviously, there's going to be cost issues that come along with it. And I think for our project, we should be looking at, you know, a cost difference of probably in excess of probably $75,000 to $100,000 at this point to go, to take it completely to saltwater as we've been discussing. You heard me talk about the, what we've been working on is the plan and getting all the program elements in there and everything, and we're going to start, if we've got some consensus on, and I think we do, on all the program elements on there, we're going to start extracting this building up from the, you know, from the ground and determining what it looks like. One of the things that we've been saying about that project over there is that, you know, Athens, and I think you guys all appreciate it based on sitting in a few council meetings with you, has a beautiful downtown with the brick and everything that goes on here. It's, you did your Essence of Athens study, it really highlighted what, the sense of community or sense of branding that you have here, and we just want to embrace that. We think the Athens brick is a big deal and we think this is a great opportunity. If you remember that breezeway that walked through, it's a perfect place just to do some pavers, some simple pavers. We think going through the breezeway, you know, being able to take the brick and do something unique in the brick. And then maybe in the fence, we pick up on some of the folk art and stuff like that and some of the fence design. We can't afford to do it all the way around, but maybe at that front piece at the parking lot, we cover that and then from there, we go to a simple aluminum fence for the rest of the site. So, we see lots of great opportunity to make, and this is one of the terms we've coined very early on, to make that an oasis over there that represents, you know, what Athens is about. And, you know, and maybe it is a little more contemporary versus traditional, like what we're in the building we're standing in today, but there's ways to pull that off and still embrace what the community is all about. And that's it.
Thank you. Other questions and comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you for coming tonight. I think one of the things, I think we really have to seriously look at saltwater versus chlorine, because my take on, input from the community is that, and because we're Athens, that saltwater is just much preferred by almost everybody who's talked to me about this thing. So, I think that we're going to have to, I'd like to see maybe the costs broken out a little bit more. I think that the idea with the spray pad and having it multiple, having it be able to expand the seasons is great, and I think that your inclusion, that would be maybe another place to put things from, you know, Essence of Athens.
Yeah, we've talked about in the pad itself.
Right, or, you know, we have those stainless steel flowers and, you know, it would be great to do something like that as the actual splat, you know, I don't know, but...
That's great.
Yeah, something like that.
And we can do things even in the concrete with the kids, maybe we can do handprints and stuff like that to really make it community-based too, so I 110% for that.
And I think that the idea of having the community room, being able to open up so much, because I think that when people think about open, closed spaces around pools, they kind of think about the Hawken College pool, which is like this cavernous thing that has a couple of open doors, and so I want to commend those sort of things because I think that those came through the community meetings and I think that those are really well thought out, so thank you.
Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Member Fall. Those were some of my, the saltwater is definitely high on the list, and I would agree that most of the people who spoke to me mentioned saltwater. In the lap pool, the design that we saw the first time, if there would be any reason to use it in competition, you never would have a swimmer right up against the wall because they can get hurt. There's usually some type of a, you know, a lane marker or something there, like the other ones that float through the pool, because you can really hurt yourself if you get too close to, so I don't know if that's designed in that.
It is.
I can't tell, so I just wanted to mention that. I couldn't see it in the design, but that's okay if you're telling...
So, it's a normal, the end lanes are a normal lane width plus a foot.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, it's an additional foot over there than the other lanes.
Okay.
I haven't really ever, I mean, if we want to put another marker down the side of that, that's fine.
That's what they do in competitive pools, they usually do that, but I'm just throwing that out there, but you do have the space, so that was one of the things. And then I had some interesting comments from people regarding the restrooms, and since I've never been in the male restrooms, the height of the urinals, I'm just saying, whether they're kids or adults or whatever, that we need to make sure that it accommodates all ages and heights, so.
So, one of the beauties of this design is that we have new standards today that we will put the, you know, we'll have ADA standards, so one of the urinals will be lower, that's usually seen as the kids.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the normal height for the others. And I think one of the beauties about this design is it is much different than what you have currently. When you go to the facility now, you come up to a desk, you check in, and then you go to a locker room. I just want to remind you, now when you come up to the desk, you know, everybody goes in, mom can take the boys and the girls with her and not split them, I doubt that she splits them now, but there's a point in time where they get to a certain age where they can't go, they have to go where they should go, under the current scenario.
Or dads.
Or dads, that's correct, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
I'm very, I have two little girls, so...
In terms of the end, when you showed us the different designs for the Essence of Athens and that kind of thing, that's a nice composite there of different ways to look at what the possibilities are. The brickwork at the far right, are those leaves or stars or, I can't quite make out what that is. It would be at the far right of the picture.
It's just sort of geometric design.
Just a geometric, okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, we might do some things with some different colored brick. I remember in the Essence program, there was some things where you were painting a particular pattern, either on the street or on some electrical boxes or something like that, and maybe there's an opportunity to even pick up on that in the brickwork itself. So, you know, there's, we have, the Essence of Athens study gives us a huge palette to work from.
Right.
And probably too much, we're going to, I mean, it's going to confuse us to some degree, so, but we're going to pare it down and really grasp what...
And then I had one question about the tunnel coming in, I really like that. It looks like you have wood on the top for the ceiling, I don't know if that would be in the entryway. So, is there a, would be some gates at the front?
Yeah, there'd be a gate across there.
Across the very front?
Yeah.
From the parking lot?
They'll either slide or swing all the way back.
Okay.
We've got to secure the pool, so...
Right, exactly, okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Katsis?
Yes, thank you. So, I guess, you know, my first thought is, just thinking about the site currently right now, there's a lot of heritage trees there, and, you know, and what I'm asking right now, because I've never run a backhoe before and I don't know how big of a mess it's going to be there, is there a chance to preserve some of those?
We're going to preserve most of them if not all. There is a, to help give you some ease, there is, because my landscape architects are all about this, there is some trees that exist between, where the recreation center is, in between the existing pool, apparently those are sacred. So, those are not going anywhere. And then we've got the monument that's south of the bike path down there, that's sacred, we're not touching that. There might be some trees within the existing pool footprint that we might impact, but I can tell you the guys we're working with are going to protect every tree that we possibly can.
Okay.
So, and they've identified these trees that are between the rec center and the pool, those are the ones that are, that you really want to keep in the end, from what I understand.
Okay, good, good, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Now, my, just for clarification, the pool, the zero-entry pool, the leisure pool, is 3/6 at maximum depth? Then the other, the competition, the diving well and competition one, the maximum is...
Diving well is 12 feet, in the lap pool we have...
3/6 to 7.
3/6 to 7.
3/6 to 7, you know, and, you know, I have a daughter at nine years old and we've been spending, I've been reintroduced back into the pool with her, and at this point, she's a competent swimmer and she always spends her time at that seven-foot section just diving in, diving in, diving in.
Sorry about that.
I just want to make sure that that is, you know, because when I see eight lanes there, I don't want the laps, I mean, are some of those lanes maybe not always going to be there so that that option is there for those kids?
I think that's a...
Operationally, what we're...
You can go to Mike.
How's it going? Good. Operationally, what we anticipate is not to have all eight lanes as lap lanes all the time. We would bring out lanes as necessary, so generally speaking, we might have four lanes open for most of the day. In the evening, we start to get some more people, so we bring out some more, but for the most part, leaving a good portion of that area open and available for kind of open swimming. That's something from a lot of parents who have teenagers especially, they want to have a place to just kind of hang out and congregate, so that's something that's on the table. Speaking to the urinal thing, if you come to Harts West, I'm too short to use the urinals in the basement there, anyway.
Good to know.
I'm six foot two. As far as saltwater and coronation systems, I think to Councilmember Fall's standpoint as far as saltwater, if you're still looking at it further right now from an operation standpoint, I lean closer toward the regular coronation because there's some pitfalls related to the saltwater system. So, right now, if they find more information and present that, we'd be open to it, but I'm leaning more toward regular coronation system right now.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? President Nisley?
Yes. I have one kind of overarching question and then some questions about the numbers. And what I'm doing is going back to a report that we received from you in September 20.
Sure.
So, at that presentation, we looked at the existing site or a site over by the solar panels.
Yes.
Which, as I understood conceptually, gave us more of a possibility of perhaps linking or maybe an indoor pool facility later, at a later date. I'm assuming though that because the cost was going to be 7.3... I'm assuming though that because the cost was gonna be 7.3 million as opposed to 6.8, that the existing facility site is the one that was moved towards?
And that, that was a primary driver in it. We had, on that site, we gotta, we have to import more fill and do more of an engineered lift to it to get it up out of the floodplain. And we didn't, we didn't do any borings over there, so I'm, I'm sort of, you know, I'm speaking from a mile high here a little bit. But we have to bring engineer fill in, bring it up, and I'm not certain what the subsurface conditions over there are. So it's likely, given that, you know, there was that little bit of a surprise, if you remember on the deep well and only having 1,000 PSF over there, it's likely that when we start moving over that way, that that, we, we still have that and probably even more in some cases. Because I'm thinking the closer we start drifting towards the river, that, that bearing capacity is probably dropping off a little bit.
Okay. The other questions, and I'll just kind of ask you ballpark and you can say.
Yeah.
Don't, don't have the information, but I just, what I did was I took your existing site estimate from September and kind of went, okay, so you were 6.2 million in September, it's now 6.4 million now. And there, and overall, the fees were 6.8, once you got the architect and engineering fees. And I understand how those could go up. Those went up about 5,000. So we're up at 6.8 total. So here my, is a, so I went through, kind of ballparked, said, okay, so what's up, what's down? So there's 15,000 less in signage, if I'm looking at this right, and 35,000 less in shade structures. Which was one of my questions early on, is like, how many shade structures are we gonna have? So we're, we're working with less shade structures? And do you know, just ballpark, give us a conceptual idea how many shade structures?
We have, we've, we've taken it down to one, but one larger shade structure. And primarily because, and that's up by the, up by the rec pool. It was on that plan that we showed on there.
Okay.
Primarily because one of those shade structures originally was accounted to be separate, but now it's, you heard me talk about, we're gonna do a little shade structure on the front of the concession stand. So I brought some of those dollars and was, was able to incorporate it in there too.
Okay.
So.
And that was, I mean, and my only comment too is remembering the community survey is that shade was one of the number one features. So, but to have one, one grouping where everybody congregates.
Yeah.
Because we need some shade. People also like to spread out, I think, when they come. So just, just a comment.
But we also have umbrellas and all that stuff.
Okay.
And another number, I think, and I was carrying some in there on the site amenities too, to do some, some smaller shade structures.
Okay. So splash pad with concrete paving is up 150,000, the lap pool's up with 200,000 more.
And that's because those square footage has increased a little bit.
Okay.
Based on some conversations.
Okay, that's great. And then prefab shelters is down from, prefab shelters is down 55, 15, excuse me, $18,000 now. And those prefab shelters.
That gets back to just reducing the shade structures themselves. Those two numbers are kind of in the same category.
Okay.
I'd ask you just look at the plan. I think there's plenty of shade on there. If there's not, then we can, we can bring some of that back.
Okay.
We have two shade structures that we could probably incorporate that are less than three years old.
Oh.
That we grant.
Oh, that might be grand. Okay, okay.
I think with what we're talking about, the buildings, we're gonna have some overhangs on the buildings and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
And then some individual umbrellas, like chairs and.
Okay. And then, and then.
And there's trees.
Okay. And then the only other question was just basic dimensions, so we get an idea. The new bath, the new bath area, square footage wise, how that compares ballpark to what the old one is? Just so we have kind of a, an idea, oh, it's gonna be a third bigger, oh, it's gonna be 10 feet smaller or?
The bathrooms?
Bathroom area, basic bathroom.
I have to get that, because we never did an analysis on your existing restroom.
Okay.
You have a large amount of open floor space in those.
Yes. We do.
But we have.
Yeah, it's a lot.
We have a few more unisex restrooms here and lockers are on the outside.
So maybe overall, a better design, but I'm looking, and maybe it looks like.
Better design, but maybe less square footage.
Less square footage and maybe same, same number of toilets, it looks like, and yeah.
Yeah. And we still got some work to do on the, on the fixture count and everything too, because that's really directed by the health department.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And then basic dimensions, I noticed it's 388 square feet for the community room, basic size?
Yeah.
Is 15 by, 15 by?
Uh.
15 by 22 or 25?
Yeah, 15 by 20.
Okay.
Yeah, roughly.
Oh, that gives us an idea.
Yeah.
So for gathering.
That's a really good, that's a good size for them. And then with the doors, you'll be able to expand out a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
It could be bigger. It's, you know, it's just cost.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, just asking questions for clarification on the design, that's all.
Thank you, President Nysoli. Any other questions or comments from council? Mayor's office?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, and this has to do with, again, going back to the salt versus chlorine. Educate me in terms of, Andrew, what's it called? What do we call it? Code brown?
Oh, code brown. Yeah.
So if you have an incident like that, to sanitize, resanitize the pool, how much, is there a difference in the time span in terms of salt being able to take care of any E coli or anything else?
You just gotta go through the whole, you know, you gotta shut it down and let it go through the whole filtration system. And typically, that turnover, I think, is, is more or less about the same between the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other question I had is for the, the lap lane pool, is there a possibility to have the shallower end deeper? Have it become five feet deep as opposed to a three foot six?
Yeah.
To where it really would lend itself more towards a comp pool because flip turns are rather hard if you're flipping, doing a flip turn in a three foot six.
Yeah, and that, but that just takes away a little bit of the recreation component of it. So if you're gonna do like volleyball or basketball or something in that pool, at five feet, you know, you're, you're getting up to here on somebody like me. So, you know, it's gonna become a, if it's about running around and diving in and doing things, you know, it's one thing. I think at Grandview, we, did we get away from that?
We did.
Yeah, we were, at Grandview, they had the same question. They were, and it's, it's strange how you guys are sort of running parallel on these things, because it's, we've never had these types of questions before necessarily, but they had a deep end and a deep end, and then they had a plateau in the middle, so they could do volleyball in the middle. And.
That's interesting.
We got down the road a little bit and then we backed off on it, went to more of a traditional lap pool like we're showing here.
Okay.
They had, they had the same concerns there.
Yeah. And they came from a very large pool too, where there was a, you know, same way you are. They had one large pool with a lot of functions in it. And that, that was sort of a driver behind it.
So we can still look at some possible depth changes.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we can study that with you till it goes out the bit. I mean, it doesn't impact cost.
Okay.
So we can keep doing cross sections through it and really get a feel for what you want to do.
We have some helpful graphics that kind of show different age groups and where the different levels are on them, which kind of just helps you understand where a child will be with the different water. Someone's surely.
That pool is a unique pool because, you know, it's, if, if one, say if the rec pool, which is more, you know, more liable to get shut down to an accident, then the lap pool becomes the pool that everybody goes to. So that's when these depths start to really come to the forefront, you know, because you lose your zero depth, that goes down to three foot six. And then if you jump over here where it's five feet down to seven feet, then you start to lose the ability for, you know, families and stuff with smaller kids to come to that pool. So, and I think that played into some decisions there also. So these are questions that we, we get quite a bit, especially when you're coming from a large, like I said, like a large pool down to, to what we're getting.
Anything else from the administration or from Assistant Director of Aquatics? Is there anything else to?
Just a thought, MSA works very closely with the actual operational components, meaning Andrew Chicky and Rich Campitelli and his staff, and Kyle, I believe, as well. So it's really nice how well they're working with operations. So it's, it is being built to where they feel that they can operate it and to the best of their knowledge and what the community uses and needs it to, and will be.
Thank you. Yeah, I am pleased to see the, the plans, although again, I think we just received them today, if I'm correct, in seeing the email. So that, I'm sure council will also, as the community, will want to continue to look these over and, and offer input and feedback. I, I know that one of the things that I had heard at some of our meetings as well in the public was the concern for local design or, or local resources as well as solar, for us to be mindful of, of renewables in the design. So that's something too, that obviously we have plenty of time to discuss and look at. And I do appreciate, again, that, you know, the discussions I've heard from, from MSA as well as from our community is that, let's make sure that we're addressing all age groups and, and that our users are gonna be, as we know, infant to past retirement.
Yeah.
And so we want to make sure that, that each element is addressing the needs of, of those unique groups. And, and so I do appreciate that you're listening to us and that you're, and that our administration is mindful of that as well and, and that we're looking into all those needs because, again, we're, we're a community of active people here and we want to continue to encourage all age groups to be using this resource and, and that each pool be meeting those, each of the pool elements, whether it's the zero entry or whether it's the lap lane or the diving well, that, the kidney shape, you know, that, that each pool, the tot pool is, is meeting the needs of the age groups that are gonna be using, using that space. And that's very important to me and I think to our community. So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We do have some citizens here as well that may or may not want to comment or question this evening. If there's nothing else from MSA. So if that's, if that's the case, if, if you kindly will remain present and then we can receive questions or comments, and again, we will limit those to just a few minutes. The president of council will have a buzzer prepared, limiting comments or questions to about three minutes. So we may be timing them by hand.
We're timing them with my phone tonight.
So the, the interruption may be a, a quick little beep from, from one of us, so thank you. Other questions or comments from folks in the audience? Sure, thank you. And yeah, please stand up to one of the podiums and.
I've stayed in Miami a lot.
Sure, thank you.
I'm Peter Hop in Pinto Island, 108 Columbia Avenue. And I'm very interested in the pool. I was, people went to the original meetings. I, I just have one comment and I think it's the second what the mayor proposed. 3.6 is a little bit difficult to turn. If you're gonna have kids here, they're gonna use the pool for any competition. We, I, I swim at the university pool. And it's dicey, I mean, dicey to the very low end. Six inches more would provide a little bit more safety, especially for, for the younger kids that are trying to do this. I mean, swimmers, they know exactly where they are, but it might, I don't, six inches wouldn't make much difference, I don't think, for, for children, but it might provide a little extra safety, marginal safety. And I assume the pool is 25, swim, the laps are 25 meters long, I mean, 25 yards.
Did you all have to check on that one?
Yeah, we had to check on that.
Yeah, because if you, that they're not, you're not really getting, you're not really getting the lap swim.
Yeah. I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on that. I can look it up here if we leave them. Yeah. Because we got pools, projects that are going on where they're 25 yards, this and this one's 25 meters. But let me look at that.
25 yards is sort of the standard for the competition.
It is.
The university. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, I mean, the point of clarification is just whether it's yards or meters.
So it will be one or the other.
It will be one or the other.
Makes a difference. Other questions or comments from citizens present this evening? Thank you, we have a few more. We have swim club, swim club members here.
Hi, I'm Martha Bishop and I live in Athens and I'm pleased with a lot of what I see in the pool design. I had a question about the lap lane pool. I know one of our council members had addressed the part about, we need an open area for teenagers and families to play, but I'm a little concerned that now we're talking about only having four lap lanes most of the time and then also having, using that pool for volleyball. I'm not sure how all these uses are going to be able to coexist in the limited eight lane pool that we have. So I think we ought to think carefully about, I think we have been using six lanes that are open for lap swimming in the current pool. So I'm not sure how we want to address this, but I think it would bear looking at further to try to get plenty of space for teenagers and families to play and plenty of lap space too. I don't know if that means a bigger pool or if it means, I don't know, not, not using it half and half. I'm not sure how that will work. And I don't know if we'll be like always rolling out the lanes at a certain time or, I, I went to a pool recently, a Y pool where, when they didn't have enough lap lanes in, you could just ask at the desk and they'd put another lane in. That seems like might be cumbersome for the staff, but I don't know how that will work. It'd be interesting to see. I'm in favor of the salt water idea and I'm in favor of the five foot depth due for the lap swimming. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else from the community? Okay. I believe if there's no other questions or comments, nothing else from the mayor's office? Ed, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Is there an opportunity to weigh in on this?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, share it so that, yeah, please, thank you. This way everyone can hear it and TV land is aware.
So, Ed Newlin, Athens. So when's this gonna be installed, I guess?
Sure. And Ed, I apologize too, I know that you came a little bit later, which is okay, that's all right. The, the document that was presented this evening does have a timeline and maybe we can get that back up on the computer, on the big screen. That might help answer your question as well, because I'm sure you're not the only one in our community that may have missed that or is curious about it.
The information about tonight's meeting came out kind of.
Short.
Pretty recent.
Correct.
So there's probably people watching on TV or.
Right.
Or something, so to be able to still weigh in on questions and clarifications and maybe.
Yes.
You know, digest this a little bit.
Yes, exactly. So the schedule, January 23rd through February 24th would be complete, finish the schematic design. Roughly February 27th through March 24th would be design development.
I need to finish it about then. I, I, you might want to speak to that, Keith, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to lock in final design in order to build the construction documents.
That's why we, you know, with, with schematic design ending around the third week or so there of February, that's when I hope we would address everybody's questions when